I'm going to call this meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Hyattman?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Graytap?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes?
Public hearing.
Public hearing for the budgets on your agenda.
Public hearing for the...
Probably doesn't show up on here, sir.
No, it doesn't. But that's okay. Thank you.
We might have that here.
I was just looking at the electronic copy. So, Board of Commissioners...
Do you require a motion to open up the public hearing?
No.
At this time, we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed 2017 fiscal year budget for St. Clair County. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission this evening? Let me ask again, are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission this evening on our proposed 2017 budget? Is there anything that you wanted to say at this point?
Uh, no.
Or reserve that for your administrator's report?
If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I would just like to make a comment that I kind of miss the old days where the sheriff used to scream at us, always walk out of budget meetings and want to kill each other.
I can cut something if you want.
Well, Howard remembers the good old days.
Well, seeing no one and hearing from no one, I declare this public hearing closed. So, next on our agenda... Wait for my... Next on our agenda is additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. This agenda does include two proclamations that have been added since it was first proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that item 2A and 2B, respectively, moved down to become items 8B and 8C.
Support.
Any questions or comments concerning that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a closed session?
Nope, that should not be done.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know either.
We should amend the...
I would make a motion that we delete item 3, and then following that, I would make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have this same mover and supporter of both those resolutions, and they both passed unanimously. Next on the agenda is another opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to hear from citizens. This is a time for anyone to address the commission on any item of interest concerning St. Clair County. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the commission this evening? Seeing none, I'll move on. Are there any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
There's no old business, new business. First, we have the Health Department Staff Development Request.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have a proclamation regarding Vern C. Bartley, Jr. And I have the proclamation in front of me, but I just want to review it with you a little bit because Mr. Bartley has been serving our county on the AAA-1B Board, and this is the board that distributes all the federal and state funds to our county through the 6th County District. And he actually began serving in 1984 while he was Senior Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for Commercial and Savings Bank of St. Clair. He was a member of the Finance Committee and served as the Board Chair of this for the 6th County Region from 1996 to 2002. He was awarded the Outstanding Volunteer Leadership Award and the Outstanding Senior Citizen Award for the Council on Aging of St. Clair County in recognition of his dedicated community service and his support for senior citizen organizations throughout southeastern Michigan. Vern was very instrumental in developing many new programs and innovations, including the Affordable Assisted Living Program, the expansion of the My Choice Program, and initiation of the region's first annual solutions for caregivers expos. I've only represented you on this board for two years, and I know that Vern is held in very high regard by all the representatives from all the various counties. And Vern is not seeking to be reappointed when his term expires next month. His health just will no longer allow him to serve. But he's...I don't know if some of you have been on the board for...
Served with him.
...a long period of time. You've probably worked closely with him. I've been very impressed with his work and how he's represented St. Clair County. So, I would like a resolution to approve this proclamation, please.
So moved.
Support.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. The other proclamation we have is recognizing Richard Semerall as our St. Clair County Veteran of the Year. I don't know, Bill, if you are more familiar with this than I.
I am not, no.
Mr. Semerall has served for...served over a decade in military service, being discharged from the Army in 1988. He was a member of the Air Defense Artillery Short Range Missile Crew and received many awards and service commendations, served overseas, and was a certified sharpshooter. He has been a wonderful family person, and he was chairman of the J. Edward Mallory Post 449, the American Legion, and was responsible for their scholarship fund. Been a very active member in that post, and he was the leader in obtaining the needed documents for the new post charter name change to honor the respected and deceased member, Mr. Edward Mallory. So, I think it's very appropriate for us to be adopting this proclamation, recognizing Richard's contribution to the veterans of our county.
Make that motion for the resolution, Board.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Colonel, can you forward that down so everybody can get it signed?
The proclamation for Mr. Bartley's been signed by everyone, but the other proclamation is on its way. The...that concludes our new business. Are there any other human service matters to come before the board this evening? For information only, we have the St. Clair County Health Department October Points of Interest, which we should receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, Health Department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it's Mr. McConnell's turn.
Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Hyattman?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Graytap?
Here.
Mr. McConnell?
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
We have motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, any updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
None?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Backing up for just one second, I just want to ask you a question. Do you want to bring up the meeting we had at CDA, or you want to wait that out?
You know, we can talk about it. We had the Central Dispatch Advisory Board met Wednesday.
Wednesday.
It seems like a long time ago. And in Central Dispatch, it seems as if we are going to be moving to 800 megahertz radios that will be going...it's going to help the dispatch center pre-up some time and be a little bit faster on the response. And it's also going to allow the individual departments that use it the chance to talk amongst themselves and not have that banter go to everybody. So, there's a cost to this, but our system that we have is antiquated, and if it breaks down...Carrie, am I wrong? It's over 500,000. I mean, I see...to fix what's there, the current system there would be...
It's a paging system, just to clarify.
The fire paging system. To replace our current system is over half a million dollars with a VHF system.
Right. So, they've done a lot of research on this, and it's a lot cheaper to go with the 800 megahertz system and get some new radios. So, we're working on looking at different funding and how many people are going to be involved in...so.
It was a very good meeting, a lot of good input from the people that were there.
Yeah.
I think the nice thing about it that I walked away with was everybody was on board, and it was nice to hear that everybody that they are representing in the background, the Fire Chiefs Association and everybody, seems to be on board. If I'm not mistaken, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they make a motion at one point...or make a comment at one point that everybody voted in the affirmative?
Everybody voted in favor.
One guy was kind of holding out, but eventually came around. So, when you've got a program running like this and everybody's on board, it just makes it a whole lot easier to implement.
Yeah. They know the radios are going to be better. It's going to be more user-friendly. It's going to be better for the employees in dispatch, from what we hear. So, we'll just find out. I don't know exactly what their timeline is or how it's going, but there'll be information coming soon. No old business, new business.
I'll make a motion to forward the fiscal year 2017 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program contract to the full board.
Support.
We have motion and support to send to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judicial and public safety matters? Seeing none. Information only? Nothing?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file all packets.
Support.
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, will you adjourn?
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry for the length of that.
Here we go, the title work, everything's good.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Could we have roll call at this time, Minister?
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamian?
Here.
Mr. Bone?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Graytap?
Present.
Mr. Hyattman?
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported.
Would there be any way we could remove the tabled item from old business?
When we get to that, we'll make the... We'll get to that.
We do that at that time.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Any nays, no nays, motion carried. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental, public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to any updates from commissioners. No updates from commissioners, any conceptual initiatives from administration?
None.
Now, we're to old business, and I take it Mr. McConnell would like to remove that from the table?
I would make that motion to remove it from being tabled.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back to the main motion, which is the Columbus Site Improvement Contract. What is your desire?
I'd make the motion.
It has been moved that...
For final action.
For final action? I support it. It has been moved and supported for final action. Any discussion? I know we've had a lot of discussion on this already.
Yeah, we met with Mark, and he's here. Can we get an update from him so all the commissioners can hear what's going on at the Columbus Park and the proposal there? Because this is a good chunk of money, $200,000, not to exceed, so he can give us a rundown. Because I do have a couple of questions on this.
Mark, do you mind?
The project is Phase 1 to expand the site amenities at Columbus County Park from the lodge and past the sledding hill. The project includes sidewalk extensions, formalizing of the fire pit area that's hugely popular during the winter sledding area, and then the eastern...or western part of the project is a retaining wall and to create a terrace, and a future phase would include the development of a children's playground. It kind of integrates the whole site so that the lodge is connected to the sledding hill and then connected to the trails farther to the west that may be developed at a later time.
I have like three questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I see on the initial and then on the fire circle benches, those were admitted. And how are they going to sit around a fire with no benches?
The plan is to...we determined that there was a huge markup for installation of those benches and that we will do that ourselves. We will buy the benches directly under county purchasing regulations and then install them ourselves and stave a lot of money.
First, the bid itself, the deck, you omitted that.
Yes.
Is that in future plans?
That would be down the road. We'd revisit that. And one of the problems with the project was that it was an odd project. There was some dirt moving and a lot of cement work and railings, and so it wasn't attractive to a lot of individuals, like a construction contractor, a dirt mover. There wasn't enough work to justify them coming in. So, we think the same thing happened with the deck, that we got a really high price for the deck because they were going to hire a smaller outfit and then mark it up as a general contract. We will revisit it later on and deal with directly with just deck builders, directly without a general contractor over them. And we think at that point, it'll be a much more manageable price. It'll be...
My last question would be, this is the initial start of a program out there. What will be the total cost for any additional that are going to be associated with this, like a playground or anything else? You have an estimated total cost. This is just the initial...
Well, the only...the next phase is identified in the capital improvement plan as a playground there. We get a lot of requests for playground. There isn't a playground in Columbus Township at all. So, the next phase next year or the year afterward would be to bid out a design-build playground somewhere around 80,000 to 100,000.
One of the questions I had for Mark before I was...when we had our meeting, I was like, man, you got a playground in every school and everywhere. I guess then you start looking about in the western county or out in that part of the district. There's no schools out in that area. I mean, it's pretty...the distance, it's not like I live in St. Clair and there's three walking distance from my house. They are...it is quite removed. You know, one of the other things he brought up too, and kind of you don't think about today, but the kids are a little bit older. When I used to drag them over and they were young, you had access...it was pretty easy to get on school property. You know, you could just go over there 15 years ago and start crawling around on school playgrounds and nobody ever said anything to you. It's getting a lot tighter with all that stuff today, too, you know? So, just another couple of editorial notes.
Any other questions for Mark? Just a couple of comments. I don't know if any of the commissioners were down to see the...I'll call it a portable pavilion. Is there another name for it down at Columbus County Park?
Canopy.
Canopy. Huge, huge structure, and it got a lot of use this year, and once the word gets out, I'm sure many more families will be utilizing that for all kinds of activities. And having the playground and all the development in that area is just going to enhance, I think tremendously, the use of Columbus County Park. But that pavilion, or whatever you want to call it, was...I was really pleasantly surprised at what a nice feature that was. Yes.
I've always thought of Columbus more as a winter park. Is that...was that originally the theme because of the sledding hill, or is it all-season use?
It was intended as a...
Are you looking to build it in that direction?
Natural resource-based park and outdoor, you know, get back to nature park is really the intention. And we had the opportunity because the one area, the hillside of the property, was so eroded, full of dying ash trees and invasive species, it made total sense to...we were going to have to do something. It made total sense to develop a sledding hill. And so, we're evolving to make sure that we offer winter sports there, but the intention is to provide something for folks to do at the property year-round.
There's equestrian trails, bike trails, cross-country ski trails, and the list goes on and on. Hunting, of course, is coming up right now.
Right.
I don't know how many hunters have registered.
We get about 60 hunters each year that register to hunt at certain areas of the park, the west of Crona Road and south of the Bell River. The high-use areas by the lodge, sledding hill are off limits to hunting, but...
Is there fishing in that river?
Yes.
People utilize it for that?
Yep, but they'll never tell you where they catch their best fish.
I wasn't asking.
Any other questions for Mark? Seeing none, thank you, Mark. As this is spending some money, could we take a call roll?
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tamian?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Graytap?
Yes.
Mr. Hyattman?
Yes. Okay, thank you. New business, the Wetlands Boardwalk Professional Service Agreement. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Wetland Boardwalk Professional Services Agreement be forwarded to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions regarding that? Mark, we...that started off at 150,000, now it's 100? Or this is just for the...
This is separate. We have a coastal zone management grant for $100,000, which is matched by $100,000 for county parks, millage funds. That's for the actual construction itself. This is a separate contract.
With Pam?
We told the coastal zone management people that we would do the engineering outside of the contract, so we...which is attractive for the grant people is that they know their investment's going to get the biggest bang of a feature that people can see and understand. So, we...in this case, we're paying for the engineering separate from the grant.
Yes.
Two questions, Mark. First off, is this the final piece of that particular park we're developing down there?
This is the final piece for the wetland portion. Separate from that, we have the two acres we acquired from Adjeson Ventures at the end of last year. We are going to start a master planning process with a public input session next Thursday at 6:00 here in the county building to get public input into what we're going to put in that two-acre parcel, so...
That was...
The boardwalk is the final piece of the wetland.
Okay, and that was one, and I actually, I still have two questions. How are you doing with the geese down there in that...
We...
I've seen your string of...
Yeah, we...as part of a change order for the contract, we put wildlife exclusion fencing and strings of ribbon over the thing, and that was very effective in keeping the Canada geese out of there. It didn't keep the mallards out of there, but we had experienced a complete, almost complete loss of all the aquatics plants that were planted the year before, and the major culprit is the Canada geese. We actually pulled the young aquatic plants out. So, from that investment, we kept the Canada geese out, and we got...the contractor was required to replant all the aquatic plants one more time, and we got a much better survival, and so it was worth the investment. We own the fence now. We left the stakes up. Depending on what we see with Canada geese coming back, we may put the fence back up just to keep the Canada geese out there. The mallards liked that because they didn't have any competition from Canada geese.
If I could beg the chair's permission for one more question?
Chair?
Any plans for restrooms down in that area?
That will be part of the discussion with that two-acre site.
Your options to put in facilities down there. Do you need plumbing? Could you put in a vault system?
You know, I'd have to check specifically whether the city has any ordinance requirements one way or another. That'll be part of that master planning process.
Okay.
But one of the big concerns for a facility like that, if it's not viewable from passersby on the nearest road, it's subject to a lot more vandalism, so that's going to be the biggest consideration of...if we build it durable enough, we'll be treated appropriately.
Vaults, people stay out of because they don't like to go in them unless they have to.
Yeah. Well, you know, we have the concrete vault toilets on the Wabstow-Voca Trail, and the one up in Voca gets...there must not be anything for the kids to do up in Voca because all kinds of things take place in that vault toilet, so...
Thank you. I would say I was down to the wetlands Sunday, and they look really good, and you could see the emergence of wetland plants coming through, looking good.
We're actually in the next phase. We're talking to the friends of the St. Clair River about managing volunteers like they do for the River Walk to help us maintain the wetlands, and with the one consultant, we had spraying for invasive species on the hillside of the two-acre parcel. Contractor for the wetland was responsible for control along the wetland. Now, they've fulfilled their requirement, so that invasive species battle will be going on for years, and we will be hiring properly certified people to continue to do the spraying on the hillside to try to keep those invasive species under control.
Talking frag mighties?
No, Japanese knotweed is the major little garlic mustard. There are little spots of frag mighties. Did you bring them up from...
Soon as I get my park down south, I'll take them back down there. No, I did not bring them up.
And one other thing I pointed out, Pam Blau was part of the design team with Smith Group JJR that designed the wetlands, and so now Smith Group JJR is working with Pam to do that, this master plan. So, it's all matches up with the original intent of the Blue Water River Walk.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the professional service agreement?
Yes.
And if I remember, the amount is $25,830?
Yes. We have a motion in a second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
The discussion's over.
Discussion? We'll bring this to the full board in two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Res... Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Resolution 1634, county at-large drain assessment. Mr. Wiley is here. You wanting more money again?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind going up in case there are any questions? Any questions from commissioners?
I'm sorry?
If I'm not mistaken, this is for next year's budgeted.
This is this year's.
This year's.
This year's. What, it was 500 and it's now 532? Is that?
Thirty-eight.
Or 38?
538.
Yeah.
Over budget?
I'm sorry?
Your over budget?
Uh, not really. This time we're under budget, so.
The current budget for this year is $550,000 for '16.
For '17, you're requesting 550, if I'm not mistaken, and I saw that in the budget?
Yes.
Right. It's kind of a little funny story, and I'm going to go back to not knowing anything about the county at large before, and remember Howard, myself, and Wiley went over to visit Mr. Wiley when he first took drain office, and it used to be 125 to 150,000, and Fred would come in every year. So Bob gets an office first year, and we have like 300,000 come back as a budgeted number, and we're, oh my God, you know, what's this all about? So we went over and met with him and sat down and explained what the county at-large was, how it works, on and so forth. We ended up giving 400,000 that year because it was, you know, how little drains you could actually clean. You can't do any projects with 125 or 150,000 miniscule, and that was probably arguably one of the biggest things that people were screaming, you know, about back then was, you know, drain work and so on and so forth, to the point now you do so much of it, they scream because they can't afford to pay on the other, so you're kind of, you know, in a, in a rock and hard spot there.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, two things. One, I believe you're asking for final action tonight, if I read the letter correct?
That would be nice, yes.
That's what it's showing on the letter. It's saying, we would like to have this approved at this time. So I don't know if that's an, a discussion for tonight or for the full board. I just read the letter and saw this letter that he sent to us.
Do you need final action tonight?
Probably doesn't really matter. He already spent it.
Okay.
Who's the maker of the motion?
There is not one yet.
I have one, yeah.
No. And the other thing, I just want to give Bob a, Robert, kudos from where you were and where we are and the work that's getting done in our drains. I think it's, he's doing a very good job feeding up our drains. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done, and that's how we got to the figure where we're at. There's a lot of work that's been neglected for a long time.
We'll see.
I still remember when I joined the board and we went over that, and someone was showing a photograph of one of our drains taken in 1950 with this huge tree growing right in the middle of the drain.
Tree's still there.
And that was in 2003, so the tree was well over 50 years old.
Do I make a motion to forward this to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob?
Resolution 1640, adoption of the St. Clair County Master Plan. I think, Jeffrey, you've presented this before. Commissioners have any questions or at this time?
Make a motion to forward it to the full board.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. The survey and remonumentation grant for 2017.
Make a motion, we send that on to the full board also?
Been moved and supported. That's tradition. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried. The 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Program.
I'd make a motion to send this to the full board.
Okay.
Support.
You didn't get a chance. Any questions for Metropolitan Planning?
No, Howard, this is one of the things that we did early on in our careers, and we got away from it for a while, and then I know we've resurrected it. I think just from a long-term, you know, capital standpoint, Kerry's obviously a numbers gal there. It just really helps to, you know, put things in where we're going to be, you know, paying. Like I said, we did it, didn't do it for a while. I think it's a useful tool to have, you know, back on.
Well, I know Lindsay has worked really hard on putting together the criteria for evaluating and making these presentations for capital improvement. So anyway, I thank you for your hard work on it. I think that's probably why there are so few questions. Anyway, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried. Smith Creek Landfill Report, I would entertain a motion to receive and-
There was not submitted.
Pardon?
There wasn't one submitted.
Wasn't one submitted. Well, that, we won't deal with that. Any other environmental matters? Seeing none. We have information only. The monthly financial documents from Park and Red.
Motion to receive and file?
Support.
Receive and file that information. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion to recess?
It's been moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
To recess.
I will cry.
At this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Okay, I see on two, we're going to have an addition.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that item 2A becomes item 7F for final action.
May I have?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Support?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to three, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. Do we have any updates tonight? Okay, seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
Okay, none. We have no old business. Moving on to 7A, proposed revisions, county procurement cards policy.
Motion to send this to the-
Go ahead.
I'd move it to full board. Support?
Any discussion? I just want, it's very minimal, and that was explained in what was given to us from Kerry. It's very minimal changes, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, professional service agreement, Metro Controls Incorporated, Blue Water Convention Center, and this is for final action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the professional service agreement, Metro Controls Incorporated, in the amount of $32,860 for final action tonight. Support?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. All right, we'll be moving on to 7C, the Extreme Shreds Agreement Addendum.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agreement addendum be sent on to the full board. Support?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Did we want to include the, the cost of that agreement in?
I will.
Oh, you will? Okay.
Howard, you're supposed to have discussion when we say discussion.
I know, I'm sorry.
All right, moving on to 7D, temporary assignment of a detective.
I'd move to move it to full board.
Have a second?
Support.
Good afternoon, and I'll just give you a real quick update. There was a letter in your packet from the undersheriff. In 2011, we took part of a grant through the UASI, the Urban Area Security Initiative, and this is a grant-funded project that assigned a deputy to the DSEMIC, which is an intelligence gathering team in the Fusion Center. Our deputy is assigned there with multiple federal agencies, the FBI, Homeland Security, State Police, large handful of state and local law enforcement. Since 2011, he's been working as a, basically doing detective work in that unit, and he is a crime analyst, and he is the only sworn one assigned to that DSEMIC through this grant, so he has full law enforcement powers. In speaking with the UASI and the DSEMIC, we would like to change his title only while assigned to that grant from deputy to detective, and that is a wage increase, and the grant will cover that wage increase, so there's no, no effect to the county government. And when he finishes that assignment and returns back, he returns back to the sheriff's office as a patrol deputy. He's got no call-out rights to work any other detective cases here in St. Clair County, only while he's assigned to this grant.
Not a union issue at all?
Union has a letter of understanding. I have it with me right here. I just dropped it off my desk. No, provided, you know, he's not in the rotation. Him forbid there's a murder tonight and we call out detectives. He's not in that rotation. But there could be roles where, I guess in that example, they would use him in the DSEMIC role, but he wouldn't come in here and work and bump out one of ours. And that was the main concern of the union also, that if the grant ceases to exist, he comes back as a deputy, not as the detective. And when he decides to change duty assignments, we replace him with someone else, it would be, he would be a deputy, and that new person would be the detective. So strictly a temporary duty assignment covered through the grant.
Do you have an approximate time of the grant?
We don't, no. It's open-ended at this point. I don't foresee it leaving anytime soon, being it's Homeland Security, and it's a, you know, a very hot topic in federal government, so I don't think it's going to go away.
Do you have any other questions for the sheriff? We don't need a roll call in this, do we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Moving on to 7E, resolution 1633, St. Clair County, 2017, general appropriations, and this is for final action.
It's all moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'd just like to chime and say once again, my phone did not ring one time this year, which is a miracle considering the past, so, kudos for you for getting it together.
No other discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
It's nice that we didn't have to make any cuts.
Very.
Let the roll call in.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. All right, moving on to 7F, the Blue Water Convention Center, southwest parking lot, and this is also for final action. You got the paperwork given to you tonight. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we give this final approval for parking lot expansion, Blue Water Convention Center, Baker Agreement, and the total amount looks like $143,470.
And that's a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay. And that includes a 10% contingency.
Yes.
Very good.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
All right, just, if you would, Jeff, just give a brief rundown on the parking lot. You're very familiar with this, what this is actually going to do for us.
Well, when Baker, when we got into the agreement with Baker College to build the additional dorms at the time, they, was it 46 parking spots? Somewhere in there that they agreed to put in. So the project is actually completed. The dorms are, now they owe us X amount of additional parking spots. We looked at it, and I think some of you have been up to events up there. Parking has, you know, become an issue. I mean, we have a lot of parking now, but it's definitely, you know, at the forefront. So the thought was Baker's going to put in their 33, you know, additional spots that they were required to do. Using the economies of scale to be able to do this, then we would expand the additional parking, which was kind of in the cards for us anyway. So we're going to be going to 65 parking spots. If you go up there, essentially, it's the rest of the green space will be done, and we'll really, it's going to help out a lot.
And that will really help out and assist our convention centers.
Mr. Chairman, how much did that come out to per spot? Because we had had a figure, didn't we have a figure somewhere close to 3.5 or 4,000?
Just around 2,000. I did the down and dirty math, and if you have the contingency, it's 2,200. You take Duke's commission out of there, we'll get it done about 1,500.
There goes my Christmas bonus.
That seems like a pretty good price considering we were told something.
4,000 was in, you know, the engineering estimate.
Yeah, that seemed like a lot of money per spot.
Yeah.
I know if we have another event like that, have two people coming in.
We do have a couple of big ones coming up.
Yeah, a couple of big ones like that. But, you know, you can't build for maximum capacity. You just can't do that. We can certainly try to get it so that it's convenient for, let's say, 80% of the conventions that come there.
Yeah.
Do we have any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will be abstaining from this vote.
All right.
By body construction.
I'll make a motion that we allow Commissioner Dunn to abstain.
Support.
Do we need a motion for him to abstain?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Dunn abstaining?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. All right. At this time, do we have any other Ways and Means matters? Seeing none, I see number nine, we have information only, Chinatown ship notice of public hearing.
Good. Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question? I, I couldn't open that item on my electronic agenda. What, what notice is this?
Industrial facilities exemption.
For what, for what company?
I think it used to be Magna, and I think it's, I've got something grupal in now. I can't even pronounce the first name. That's the big employer, and I know they've had multiple expansions there. I'm just making that assumption because I know that through the EDA, Dan Casey, I sit on the EDA board, and he had brought that up with a previous meeting.
Used to be Continental Plastics right there on, what do you got, Road, and now it's Magna Corporation?
Something grupal, and they actually sold, Magna sold it, and.
I couldn't hear you, Chris.
It's not opening for me either.
All right.
We have a motion in a second on that? Seeing valid?
Can we, can we get it open, at least send it to us so we know what it is?
It's an informational-only piece.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at it, though. It's my area, and I'd just send it to us, please.
It was actually just, it was an email from Chinatown. That's what it was.
My iPad says it's an Adobe Acrobat.
Yeah, I made it into a PDF, but.
It didn't, it didn't come through.
That's all I got was the Acrobat or Adobe Reader.
It was from Grupo Antoin for an industrial facilities extension, extension for the facility located at 4662 Cudahoga Road, Chinatown, Michigan.
Short and sweet.
Thank you.
Okay, just send it over. Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second yet?
That is actually an interesting story. They were going to-
I have a motion to receive this.
It's all moved.
We don't have it.
I just gonna, they were going to close that plant at one time.
We don't have it.
And they have done multiple expansions. They had to buy some additional land around there to put additional parking in. Some of us got a tour. We weren't on a tour of that place.
Yes.
Couple of years ago. Man, they were just busting out at the seams down there.
They were. They poured a ton of money into that place, really. Did a great job making it look good.
You should have it down there.
I heard it, just come in.
Now can I have a motion to receive?
It's all moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm reading it. Hang on a minute.
Just go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to receive and file packets. Support?
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I got something confused here. I've got another item here, a contract approval request for leachate pretreatment scaling project.
That was last month.
It was in this packet.
It was, yeah.
That was from the last meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we hadn't forgotten something.
Still not able to open this, Chris.
It's weird, it looks like mine.
He's technologically challenged.